I need water. You all rise to place. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Lewis?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Bell?
Here.
Alderman Old?
Here.
Alderman Bokart?
Here.
Alderman Rafferty? Approval approval for August 16th, 2022 minutes. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
August 16th.
Oh, that's you.
So moved.
I'll give a second. All in favor?
Yes, I do.
Uh, Mr. Wilson. Adjustment and or approvals of the agenda. I'll give a motion, please.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Special item, we have none. Affirmative to the board of commissions, we have none. Scheduled public comments, Mr. Jackson will not be here tonight, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, just to let everybody know, any written request must be received by city clerk by Wednesday before the meeting. Public hearing, none. Air inductions to first reading, council bill number 2022-022, in order to extend the corporate limits of the city limits of Ashland, Missouri by annexing unincorporated area, directing the city clerk to give notice of the annexation of Welsh property tabled on August 16th, 2022.
The staff board is short for this one, it's tabled last meeting. We talked about this last handful of meetings. Both parties are here for discussion questions with the board as desired, but as indicated last meeting, we are in a position to move forward with this annexation if desired by the board.
Any questions for staff? Comments?
Has the property line been taken care of?
Yeah, the location has been resolved.
I will let them speak to that if necessary.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I can get a speaker.
Please, Mr. Wilson, come here. Trace your name and address, please.
Brian Welch, 55 East St. Turner Road. The boundary line dispute has not been resolved at this time, but it was written out of the plat for the annexation. There's been a couple offers on the table to Mr. Smar for him to take land and have the annexation, but we haven't come to an agreement on that. I guess we're still working on it at this point. So if he has a comment that he'd like to put forth, then he's welcome to stand up and talk to it. But at this point, no, it hasn't been resolved yet.
Any questions for Mr. Welch?
No.
My brother did have a heart attack today, so he was wanting to speak at this meeting for you guys, aldermen, and he's in the ICU in Kansas City, so I would like to see you guys table this for another month till he can have his say in front of you guys.
Sir, can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
So I'm Todd Smith, I'm the city attorney.
Yes, sir.
In this action, the actual owner is Barbara Wells, that's your mom, right?
My mom, yes.
Okay. And she doesn't participate in these meetings, right?
She's been to meetings with us and Mr. Smar, but she takes care of my dad that has Alzheimer's and it's very hard for her to get out of the house and...
And I don't mean to pry, that wasn't what I'm saying, I'm just trying to get it in a sense. Are you, do you have a conservator over there? Are you her attorney? You have all that stuff?
We have this written through an attorney that my brother and I make decisions on this piece of property.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Smar? Mr. Smar, we'd like to have a speak.
My name's Kane Gammann, H75 Musket Place, I'm here nationally. I'm an attorney for the Smars. So generally, we're under the impression that this will be tabled until we get the plat issue worked out and bring it all up together with the annexation. The annexation, the site plan, all together to get it all done in one, in one try. Regardless, we know that there are lawsuits still pending. Those issues haven't been resolved yet, especially regarding title. The, you know, there's issues with the proposed annexation as the subdivision are incompatible with the surrounding neighborhoods and issues with lot size, erosion control, tree protection, and drainage issues. All of those are still issues as of today because the original plat is what's going to be proposed, and we haven't had any changes of that or any agreements otherwise. So with that, we request that this first reading be tabled until the site plan has been brought up for approval by this board. With that, are there any questions, Brian Oden?
Any questions, sir?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, come on up, sir, have a...
Steve Jeffrey. Deb, it's my brother on the property on the west side. What do you annex up and do? Are you annexing based on their description here?
Your description.
Okay, they have, this description includes land within MODOT driveway for state route. So therefore, if you annex this, you're annexing MODOT property, correct? You just don't do that. I'll give you a heads up right now. There's a certain procedure you have to go through. And it's the EBG 236.15, and I made a couple of comments here you can add if you want to. Sure, if you'd like to have it.
Do you have it listed?
Yeah. Just give you a heads up, okay? Because you might want to clarify that before we get down the road. And if they have to come up with a description that eliminates the driveway, then they have time to do it.
Thanks, sir.
Is that good? I mean, I guarantee you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, so what stage are we in reviewing all of these questions that are popping up every week that it keeps going? Like, what state, like, has planning and zoning seen this plat that has the issues with lot size and drainage and et cetera?
We have a, I'll let Darren speak to PMZ's action on this, so does our.
We saw the original proposed plat for the subdivision, but they've been, Smar and the Welches have been trying to work through a different arrangement for those, and we haven't seen any new ones since 2022.
So what is the normal procedure? Would it be annexation and then the plat review goes through PMZ, or is it normal for PMZ to see the plat review before the annexation? Or what's normal? Because this seems much messier than the rest of the things we've been asked.
So the original submittal all came through as an individual packet, and it was based off the original legal description that they included in their petition. Since then, they've cut out the contested portion of land from the annexation petition, resubmitted that. They have reworked their preliminary plat, but we have not taken a look at that one or reviewed it or given PMZ approval to that one. As Darren pointed out, there's additional behind the scenes that they're working on to come forward with the flat that the better fits. And it would be my opinion that, you know, Nathan's idea of cutting out this contested thing, so this lawsuit, which is slow-moving and has no end in sight, our legal position is immaterial. That was the whole idea of cutting in the donut hole, right? It doesn't matter where this line gets drawn, we've kind of excised it out. And that this body is in a position to vote, you don't have to. You can yes, no, or table it at your discretion.
I would prefer to table it indefinitely until all of that gets cleaned up so that we know what we're voting on exactly.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion.
It's a suggestion. I will make a motion, but I'm just throwing that out there that that's where my thoughts are.
My question is, how long can you table something just for, I mean, you know, do we say 2023? You know what I mean? I mean, I think it's time to vote and vote. I mean, obviously, this is a giant mess. And if they need to get their ducks in a row and bring us back to us at a later time that they so choose, that's completely fine. But I just think that this popping up on every single agenda, and we talk for 10 minutes and hear new reasons why it's not ready yet, is a little bit overboard to this point. So I would, I'm fine with everybody, I mean, whatever motion you want to make, but I would prefer that we just vote on it instead of tabling. And if you think it should be tabled, just vote that direction, and they can bring it back whenever they have everything ready to go.
So I guess with that, does the board, if the board doesn't want to annex it without this small swath of property, I would recommend taking that action. If the intent is to not take action on the annexation until we have a new plat proposed and come forward, then make that recommendation as well.
I would react with two other comments to your question. So first, as a matter of Roberts procedural rule, by two-thirds vote, you can, in debate, inc cause a vote to occur. Calling question, previous question. That is an option. That's a way to prevent indefinite debate. The lawsuit was filed June 1st. It is in infancy. There is a motion to dismiss that's been filed. There's no hearing date on this. This lawsuit is not going to be concluded other than by settlement anytime soon. Months, a year would not be unreasonable. And they may settle tomorrow, yeah.
If we vote against the annexation, does it not moot out the lawsuit?
Would an annexation, if you took up the matter of annexation and said, no, we're not annexing it, no, they could still have quiet title. They could still have a dispute about where this line is. Because I understand that, you know, is it on the tree line or is it not, something to that effect? They would still have an active controversy as to that point. It would preclude them selling later or doing anything else with it. They would certainly, now whether they would have the will to pursue, this is a different matter, but they'd have the justifiable controversy as to the title. So no, it would not moot it, in my opinion.
I still don't understand why we would want to be, although we're not obviously joined in any suit, I mean, we're no party to that, but why we would want to, I think we discussed before, like, you know, kind of with the annexation policy, right, it's like, the city gets some questionable benefit about expanding their, their city limits to that direction, and the property owner gets innumerable benefits of lot density, city utilities, et cetera, snow removal, all of these wonderful things that the city's able to provide. And I don't know that it's in our best interest to step in the middle of this mess and say, here's also some good stuff the city can do for you while you're in the middle of this mess. If they get it resolved and elect to come back and say, look, this is not a question, there's no disputes, there's no suits, there's no questions about drainage, tree block, I mean, all of these things, then so be it. We would be happy to take a nice, bowtie piece of property into the city and trade with it all our, trade with it all our, you know, all our utilities and those kinds of things. But I just think right now, it's just, it's not ready for that kind of stuff.
So it's tabled.
So, and there's a, there's some debate amongst the academic community about the length of tabling. There are some authorities that say tabling means, like, to the end of the meeting, to the end of the month. I won't pass judgment on that, but if the board is willing to, if they feel like it's inefficient to keep doing this, then it's reasonable to act. If they're happy to have 10 minutes every meeting, that's fine. I mean, I have a, I have a view on that, but it's not a legal one. I leave it to your judgment about efficiency of these meetings and your time and the participation of your constituents. That's not a legal question, in my opinion. There are, there is a mechanism to kick it down the road in two weeks. There's a legal mechanism to decide right now, yes, no. We have to, you know, there are options for all of those things. But I get the sense that the board is indecisive on this point. As a justification, I don't say that to be critical or condescending. It's the thorny issue. It's in the interests of some of the parties to make it so. And again, that's not a con, I don't mean to be critical, that's just the situation, part of the issue here. Yeah.
Can I make one other comment? So when staying in the county, the Welches have the option to develop it in the county regardless of the lawsuit. That is irrelevant at that point. I know that the county standards for lot sizes are actually less in the development if they have access to the city sewer. So the thing is, they'll still be using the same roads if it's in the county. Same amount of traffic. They'll still be going to the southern boot schools.
There won't be the same amount of traffic.
All that will be the same.
Because they won't, if it's not the city, they will be limited to lot size depending on zoning, either three and a half acres per lot or five.
That is actually not true. That may be your understanding, but that's not the case.
Why is it not true?
So if, if they have access to sewer, they can, I can tell you there's a development, there aren't many of them in the county, but there's one called Nursery Heights. And I can tell you that their side lot lines are six feet on either side. So it's total 12. Ours are total 20. So they could actually put more, more houses in there.
Yeah, I don't know how that works. And I, again, my understanding is less, but I'm not just leaning on my opinion. You know, I'm talking to realtors and asking them about the specifics of what the impact would or would not be if that were the case. So...
So does the city have to grant access to sewer if it's in close proximity, or is that something that would come before us that we would ask? Because, or they would have, have to ask permission out of that?
They'll have to ask.
I don't have an answer sitting off, sitting here for that.
But then it'd be silly to grant them the annexation and then be like, oh, but no sewer.
I mean, I don't know.
No, but I'm saying, if they grant them access to the sewer, then they can have smaller lot size. I'm just asking if it's an automatic, it's within proximity, it can happen, or if that's something that would be a decision. Does that come before us or PMZ?
So that would end up coming to you guys, because we do have some explicit code language as it relates to municipal services and who they're offered to. But the larger issue with this is, you know, right now, we're talking about the board wanting control over how that develops or doesn't develop. You lose that control by not annexing it. The county's going to do what the county wants to do, that's an efficient version of the county.
And I understand that, but I'm concerned that there's a, going to be a pocket, if we annex it right now, there's going to be a pocket that is county, that we don't have any control over. And I would prefer for that to be cleared up before we do any annexation.
And I do have a question about tabling.
Yeah.
If in the motion, it is specific that it is tabled until the property line dispute is resolved, wouldn't that take it off of our agenda until they can come back and say that or stuff?
So I don't know that that is technically improper under Roberts promontory rules. I would, I would view that as unadvisable. He would be conceivably tabling tubby for two years.
Well, and if that's how long it takes them to get it done, so be it. It's not on our shoulders every month.
I think you could do that. And I understand the virtue of doing that. You would, you would get around every meeting of this body having to bring this up. These folks would have to keep coming. But again, I, as a matter of law, I'm looking at the case synergies right now. This lawsuit is on step two. Now, most lawsuits of this type settle, and that's the cart and horse problem. We would like them to resolve it to make our decision clearer and easier. They would like us to decide to make their settlements clearer and easier. Nobody wants to go first, is my particular estimation of the problem.
If we, so we spent some on age for the public hearing and notice and everything else, if we were just to vote no and say, when you're ready, come back, rather than tabling, then we would incur the cost of re-n noticing, republiceering, all of that? What's that cost?
It's setting out in the equity year, my imagination is.
Yeah, you have to wait for it to come back around if it fails.
You can't just successively keep refinancing. You have to wait a year.
So if there's a desire to table it, I would put something more explicit than what Rick is suggesting, maybe a number of months, if you wanted to say six months, and we'll take a look and see for a status update. And I think we do run into an issue of potentially perpetuating this for multiple years if we put an open-ended deadline on it.
And in fairness, I mean, your motion to table, it's not sacrosanct, any of the other quarters, that I understand the lawsuit got settled yesterday, I move that we bring this back up. And you could do that. And I imagine they would inform us.
I think one of my, I just wanted to say, I don't know that, at least me personally, that I care about the control over the property so much. Obviously, if it becomes part of the city's, then it's our obligation to have that kind of control. But again, just leaning back on things that this board has done in the past, is that we had a commercial piece of property, an ideal development, that more or less didn't really have any issues except the people close to it didn't really like it. And we voted against it because there was some controversy surrounding it. And then, of course, the gentleman brought it back, and we gave it consideration based on its own merits and not the other things going around on the perimeter. But this, to me, is the complete opposite. I mean, this, if you want to annex a nice piece of property, bowtie and ready to go, this isn't it. It's in the middle of a cluster. And I just, I don't, I don't see why we keep beating around the bush and wanting to hear something that is incomplete until it's ready to be complete.
Mr. Welch, you want to come to the podium?
Yeah. Do I state my name and everything again?
We got it.
No.
Okay. So at this time, I'm prepared to quitclaim deed that section of land over to Mr. Smar. Will be done tomorrow. The lawyer will have the letter over to his lawyer, but there's no guarantee that Mr. Smar will annex that piece of property, that 18 feet. And I do know that in the city of Ashland, because I've been doing my homework, there is other pieces of property inside the city limits that are not annexed, but they're in, they're inside the city. So if I quitclaim this piece of property to him tomorrow, would you guys annex this if he doesn't annex? My last offer on the table to him was, he can have the property as long as he annexes it. He did not accept that offer. So to get this boundary line dispute settled, I'd like to hear from you guys tonight. If I give him the piece of property tomorrow, can we go forward with the annex?
And Mr. Welch, I, I think that's a good faith offer. And I, and I firmly believe what I just said. I think it's reasonable for you all to wait on the city, and my clients want to wait on you all. I mean, this is the problem. Nobody wants to go first. I'm, I mean, we're not going to have an oral handshake agreement about a property deal if the city's not a party to. Part of me says, we are so intertwined with you all that we should engage in some sort of productive dialogue. I'm extremely hesitant to do so, though. It's a very thorny issue. You've got a lawsuit going, y'all are represented, we're not technically parties here. We could table this for 10 years if we wanted to.
Okay.
You know, and so I'm hesitant. I agree, it would be productive, and it is appealing in that regard. Hey, let's just settle this right now and move on. But we don't do that. That's not how this works. If we were ever to do that, which I think unlikely, we'd be talking about a contract and written documents and lawyers. And it's, and so I, I think your offer's a good faith. And I'm not on this board, I simply advise it. But my advice to these members were, that's not a good way to do business. Another person?
I'm, I'm very willing to give him the piece of property to settle this border dispute because it's only costing thousands and thousands of dollars of lawyers, and it's costing more than the little piece of property's worth. So I'm, I'm willing to do that tomorrow if Mr. Smar would be willing to annex the 20 feet. We have our property line dispute settled. As for stormwater drainage and all of these other things, that's for the engineers to figure out as we go through planning and zoning, and it's not like that. We can get around anything that DNR tells us that we have to do with our stormwater. We have to haul our water and we have to slow it down. So all of that will come before planning and zoning, before the final plat is actually brought to you guys. And then you guys get to vote on that. So then it brings the next question. What about Bill Martin's subdivision? Where we're supposed to give him a thru road for fires, school buses, and everything else. If we don't get annexed, he doesn't have this part of the subdivision. So we're rounding the corner to a bigger problem. So at this point, we don't even know if we'll build a subdivision on it. We just want to be annexed into the city of Ashland. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Can I get a motion on council bill number 2022-02? In order to extend the corporate limits of the city of Ashland by annexing unincorporated area, directing the city clerk to give notice of annexation of Welsh property. I have a motion.
I think this is why you all get paid in big bucks.
Well, the person that's asking for the annexation is asking for it to be tabled. So I move that we table this for, do we want to set them out of time?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Three months?
I think pretty much. We're done.
Three months.
Actually, they're very, very standard for 40 years.
I move that we table this for three months to give them time to attempt to settle their property.
A second.
I have a call.
Can we do a discussion on the motion or no?
I mean, part of me wants to throw everybody out and have a closed session, quite honestly, and give you legal advice.
Can we do a closed session? It's not going to announce that.
No.
Well, I think, I think if we can discuss, I think it's better to just say where we're at. And say, you know, like, you know, if someone would have just made a motion to vote no, I probably would have been in support of that tonight. And so I think if we're going to table this for three months, that in three months, something better be different, or it will be a no for me at least. And I don't have a problem saying that today, so...
And I agree with you.
Yeah.
I would agree.
And I, I don't want to be, I, you know, I think it's better to just be...
If it's not fixed in three months, it'll be a no.
Yeah, I think it's better to just be transparent and let people know that's where we're at.
And I, in council, I, I speak carefully, you all are represented. One would imagine if this body gave a firm deadline, it would motivate the settlement discussion. If they knew in 90 days, it's over. If we were ever going to have a resolution or make some drastic change, if there was ever going to be a, now's the time, come to Jesus moment, an argument could be made that that kind of comment is very productive. And I, I think that they hear you loud and clear. Let's, and of course, they may need a jury trial in two years to sort it out, but that would certainly motivate settlement, I would imagine. I concede it's complicated, and I'm certainly not the expert on all the eccentricities, but these thorny disputes have no time.
Can I have one second? Second.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Bokart?
Aye.
Alderman Bokart?
No.
Order number 1413, in order to amend chapter six, chapter six board of commissions of the city of Ashland, call them. Staff report, please.
Second reading amended as discussed at the last meeting. Just as an update to that, Mayor Slanker advised that we do have a forthcoming PMZ application, so hopefully we'll have that for appointment at the next meeting.
Can I get a motion? Order number 1413, in order to amend chapter six board of commissions of the city of Ashland, call them. So moved. Can I get a second?
Sir.
Alderman Bokart?
Aye.
Alderman Old?
Aye.
Alderman Bell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Order number 1414, 1414, in order to authorize the mayor's tenure into the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commissions Fund Program Agreement. Staff report, please.
This is the second reading as discussed. VMS was able to get a revision on the corrections that Melissa pointed out. However, we are requesting that this second reading be tabled. We have an outstanding question to MODOT about the reimbursement process that has not been answered. Not that it'll impact the agreement in any way, we just want some clarity since we're working with some partners on how to handle financing this project.
So is what was in our package the revised copy? Because the description on that one is still not correct. So if we're pulling it, we need to have time to check that all aspects of the project that's noted in there.
And this is not the most updated, because we met with MODOT a week and a half ago, and they basically just stated it was... and they basically just stated it was a clerical error on their part, cutting and pasting the project description, so.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion on Ordinance Number 1414, in order to authorizing the mayor to enter into the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Fund Program Agreement? Do we look at the motion to table? Yep. Can I get a motion to table, please?
Motion to table.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Almer Lewis?
Aye.
Almer Wilson?
Aye.
Almer Bell?
Aye.
Almer Owen?
Aye.
Almer Bochard?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 1415, ordinance of the, of the City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the city code by adding one new section regarding Jacob Bridge. Staff report?
This is the second reading. You'll have two versions in your packet, one with the red line of what was changed. We had some language requested by MoDOT that didn't make it into the first draft that has since been added.
Any questions for staff? Can we get a motion on Ordinance Number 1415, in order to the City of Ashland, Missouri, amending the city code by adding one section regarding Jacob Bridge?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Almer Bochard?
Aye.
Almer Owen?
Aye.
Almer Bell?
Aye.
Almer Wilson?
Aye.
And Almer Lewis?
Aye.
New business, a resolution approving the site plan for Taco Bell.
This is going to be a little easier for you. Okay, this is the site plan for Taco Bell. The owner of the property is Ray Stone Capital Group, and submitting engineering fund is Wehe Engineers Incorporated. The site plan was reviewed by Mr. John Conway, the city engineer, and there is a representative from the construction management company, TM...
G and G.
TMG Construction, Mr. Mike Goings, if you have any questions. Subject site is Lot 1, East Ashland Plaza. It's approximately 1.35 acres in size. This property sits east of South Highway 63 and south of East Broadway. After careful consideration, staff recommends approval of the submitted site plan, meeting the conditional requirements for approval. Those conditions were corrected. It was the storm warning, and they just added onsite, underground detention. And it was approved conditionally by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the submittal is now incorporated to the table.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion on resolving, resolution approving the site plan of Taco Bell?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Almer Lewis?
Aye.
Almer Wilson?
Aye.
Almer Bell?
Aye.
Almer Owen?
Aye.
Almer Bochard?
Aye.
All right. Going to report just a few simple things. I spoke with Kyle earlier today about this, but James is not here. FFA group contacted me the other day about doing a cleanup in the park, but it will be supervised by a member of the city staff, formerly James Cruel, James Cruel, Cruel, sorry, my speech. But I will have Kyle reach out to James, see if we can get him to stop down through FFA. And just mention fireworks in Hall Fest this Friday, or this Saturday. All in my report. City Mission Report.
Just a few things. The, for those that are unaware, as part of the design for this building, there was a desire to install transfer switches and have a backup power generator. We don't have confirmation on the grant that was applied for earlier this year with regards to the generator, but the transfer switches, which were on back order, have arrived. There's a desire to install those next week. As part of that, they'll need to power down the whole building for an entire day, so we're kind of working on scheduling that to see when that'll fall. We tried to push back to get it on a weekend, but we might not win that battle based on availability of the workforce, so we'll likely have to close City Hall during the week at some point next week, shooting for Monday or Tuesday most likely, but more to follow on that. The only other item I have at this time is Darla's getting ready to leave on a much-needed vacation, so she won't be here for the next meeting. We'll probably have a little bit shorter agenda, and we're working with Nathan and Todd to potentially start doing a workshop on the impact fees for that meeting, since we'll have a light agenda at this time.
Good answer. That is all I have. See any further reports?
No report this time. Just whoever covered for you, I'll, we'll be closed session next.
And we'll have to tell the reason.
Legal advice.
Please chief multiple report.
Did everybody read my report? It was very brief. So, the only thing I've got to add to that is a couple of things that have popped up since then. One thing that's been kind of sort of festering until last week, when I basically got two parade permit requests in the same week. I'm aiming for the next board meetings, kind of wanted to give you a heads up. I'm going to submit a policy change request that you guys will need to vote on that will amend the parade permit ordinance that was amended last year, but was not, whenever they changed some language in there, it didn't match the permit in terms of the length of time that somebody has to give us to plan, you know, our end of a parade and to issue that permit. Apparently, it's seven to 30 days. So, no sooner than seven days and no longer than 30 days out, and we need to change that because our permit says 90 days, which is a little more reasonable time for us to get personnel together. The other part that I'm going to be asking the board to consider when this actually does come from, we just kind of want you to think about this, is doing something that a lot of other cities around us do, and that is a fee for a parade permit, because we are hemorrhaging overtime and part-time money to do a parade for this and a parade for that and a parade for this, and it's, it's not sustainable. And at some point, you know, there's going to be parades going through time where there's no cops because you can't afford to pay them. So, on a slightly better note, we discovered a mistake that Axon, who's our contracted company that we have body cameras, tasers, and in-car cameras through, they made about a $12,000 error and are going to be sending us a refund check on that, so yay, budget. That's all I got. If anybody's got any questions.
Kyle, bring that down.
Right.
Let the board on the floor. Almer Lewis?
No report.
Almer Wilson?
No report.
Almer Bell?
No report.
Almer Owen?
No report.
Almer Bochard?
Got nothing.
All right.